Welcome to our regular meeting. Today is Monday, June ninth. And we will call to order seven P M. Roll call.
President Valerie Reinfeld.
Here.
Vice President Andrea DiQuillo.
Here.
Councilmember Deb Castini Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Stiglia.
Present.
Councilmember Greg Predanovich.
Happy to be here.
Councilmembers Brooke Rashad Williams and Charlie Blair Fuller are not present. And we have Mayor Paul Giambracci.
Here.
All right, and we will do the pledge of allegiance, stand if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Thank you, and we will. Councilmember Brooke Rashad Williams is online. And we will move to public comment. There's nobody physically in our room right now. We will move to online. If you would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand and we will promote you to panelists. Comments only from residents or taxpayers. Please state your name and your address. All right, nobody is raising their hand. We gave enough time, so we will close public comments. And we will move to our ordinary items.
Madam President, motion to approve the meeting minutes from the May fifth, twenty twenty five council workshop meeting and the May twelfth, twenty twenty five regular council meeting.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And it carries. Everybody's back. Okay. And Mr. Mayor.
Do you want the mayor's report now in the workshop?
Just one meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Chief has reported to me there are no significant incidents for the month of May twenty twenty five. Our office was handling a total of nine hundred thirty events. For this month, four thousand six hundred forty three year to date consisting of calls, returns, and proactive patrol engagements and details affecting four arrests. The department's five police vehicles logged a total of three thousand one hundred sixteen miles. Note that car number eight, the twenty twenty, the twenty twenty Ford Interceptor S U V is temporarily out of service. The combined year-to-date total for mileage is twenty seven thousand one hundred eleven miles. The ticket summary for the month of March twenty twenty five was forty eight. One non-traffic, eight parking, and thirty-nine traffic tickets. The magisterial fines for the month were eight hundred eighteen dollars and nine cents, a total of nine thousand twelve dollars and seventy cents per year. In recent weeks, several police departments, including Churchill, have seen a considerable increase in theft as well as vehicles being stolen. Some of these incidents were captured on Ring Cam technology and shows several actors, most believed to be juvenile, occupying stolen vehicles and traveling through the neighborhoods streets at night. The passengers periodically exit the vehicle and begin checking the door handles on parked vehicles, hoping to find ones that are left unlocked. Of the vehicles that were stolen, all were left unsecured with the keys inside. Several of these stolen vehicles were involved in other criminal acts, including shots fired, incidents, shootings, hit-and-run crashes, and fleeing from the police. Residents are reminded to always keep their vehicles locked, keys with the keys inside. Not locked with keys, it was locked with the keys outside.
Please keep them not inside.
We're gonna be getting calls about that.
And when parked, remove the valuables from plain view and never leave the keys inside. Chief Ronald Ackley pleased to advise us that he has completed the hiring process and will be soon walking aboard our newest police officer, Luke Sklandar. Luke is a twenty-three-year-old and comes to us from the Pennsylboro Police Department where he has served the past year and a half. Following an extensive testing and interviewing process followed by comprehensive background qualifications are that Luke is a very professional, respected, and proactive officer and will undoubtedly be an excellent complement to our department. We will now have eight officers and a chief to protect and serve our community in a highly professional manner. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month are reported on the attached police department reports. I have one other item I'd like to read. This is a letter from April Klein. Dear Mayor Giambracci, this letter was written to acknowledge and thank Churchill Officer Jeff Hansler for his help, both emotional and physical during a medical emergency at my home on Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty five. Officer Hansler arrived on the scene before an ambulance and assisted in providing support when my husband suffered a medical emergency. Jeff helped keep me calm and assisted the E M Ts as they assessed the situation. I will be forever grateful for his service. One of the benefits of being a Churchill resident is the quick professional response of our police officers to emergency situations. Please convey my gratitude to Jeff's actions and to the police chief. Thank you. Kind regards, April Klein, eighteen Holland Road.
Madam President, motion to accept the mayor's report for June twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. Moving on to our treasurer's report.
Sorry, I wanted to add, maybe the chief can talk a little more about one of the officers that we're going to be in. We'll have them at the next regular meeting for council.
Yeah, I think his last day in November the fifteenth, so we'll get him at my office with the mayor for an informal swearing in to get him on the road train. So we'll look to the July meeting for the formal swearing.
Thank you.
Madam President, motion to accept the treasurer's report for May thirty first, twenty twenty five, and directing the finance officers to pay the bills for the borough of Churchill recruited since May thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
For discussion purposes, and for discussion purposes, I just had a couple things I would give those two orders that we had, like we always do, Gateway Engineers, for a total of thirty-two thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents, and Big Lea Audi for twenty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars. I also just want to add, if I may, a quick update. As of May thirty first, we have received sixty-nine point thirty-two percent of revenue. There was a large tax clause in May of one point two million, and we have used thirty-seven point seven-three percent of expenditures. We are right on track. You're doing well.
Awesome. Thank you for that update. Any other discussion?
One item that I'll bring up is with the sewer right now, there's a large transfer that needs to be done, so that's why we're a little bit inflated for this month. That will go back into the general, the debt of the general, but due to front.
Due to front, yeah, perfect.
It's like out of the middle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. Moving on to our discussion items.
So discussion item number six would be regarding a resolution to approve an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Wilkins Township regarding the transfer of San Perry Sewer Trunk T zero seven and T zero nine to Alka San. And specifically, I guess I would motion that we will do that. Sorry. I was thinking we wanted to discuss it first.
Yeah, we haven't discussed it. We're not gonna.
Sorry. Got it. Okay. So to have a little bit of background, you know, this is part of the regionalization where Alka San is taking over some of these larger multi-municipal lines. I'll let Dennis or Michelle jump in here too, because I think they have some additional cost information they can share, but as part of that project, you know, Alka San is more well-equipped to take care of and deal with these lines over time. You know, they have the right expertise and can get better costing for when work needs to be done, et cetera. So they are taking over a lot of these lines and it will help with future differing, you know, future large repairs that would be saddled onto the borough. This is a line that is shared with, it's mostly in Penn Hill, and we share a small amount of the flow. I think it's five to ten percent, right, Dennis?
Well, this one's actually downstream of Wilkins.
It's our building.
Excuse me. Yeah, but there. So the T O seven, there is a larger portion that's coming down Buella and the Brown. And so that's a fifty-fifty split between Churchill and Wilkins. And then the T O nine is actually a twenty-six point five percent split, twenty-six point five to Churchill Borough and the rest of the rest of Wilkins.
Okay, we established, those numbers were established and new ordinance that were created with Wilkins and Churchill in nineteen seventy-six.
The actual origin.
The original. A long time ago, but we're still required to abide by them.
And that's one of the benefits of the regionalization is those large multi-municipal lines that are taken over. So these lines that are being taken over are actually outside of Churchill, but Churchill has responsibility because of the agreement. So that'll be the benefit, like Matt said, that there will no longer be that necessity that Churchill and Wilkins have to share taking care of that line. It would now be Alka San that can take care of it. It would be spread across.
And we cannot vote on that today, correct? We're just discussing that today first.
We are too. Wilkins had prepared an initial draft, we made some edits, and it's now in Wilkins District Court, so we're still kind of finalizing the details.
We'll talk some of the numbers for it.
Yeah.
So the T O seven, which is the Buella to Brown, the total for that was ninety-eight thousand ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents. Our percentage of responsibility is fifty percent of that, so it's forty-nine thousand forty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents. T O nine, which is the Rhode Island Shell font, was twenty-six point five percent responsibility on our part. The total that was to be is four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine, so our amount is one thousand three hundred nineteen dollars and forty-four cents. So both together, we owe fifty thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. I will give a shout out to Denny and his team. They're really working on these numbers and maybe getting them down a lot lower than we were originally seeing. We were talking about maybe three, four. Yeah, it's gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
But we're hard at it. Now it's in Zookum, so.
And specifically, sorry, specifically that is to do repairs that are required to bring the line up to kind of the gold line standard so they can take it over. And then any future repair, they will be responsible for. For example, right now, if this line did break, like Wilkins would come back in charge. They have, you know, we have a legal agreement because we have flow that goes into these pipes, so we're responsible for them. You know, so this is good because it takes something that we don't have a lot of control over and it gets it out of our hands, out of Wilkins' hands, and, you know, spreads it over the multi municipal.
Thank you for breaking that down. It's really helpful for people to understand.
And also, I think we should say that Wilkins is prompting the money for these repairs and allowing the borough to finance its share in the course of twelve months. So that's why it's essentially set up in the repayment agreement. Why not splitting the bills, Wilkins paying the bills? They're gonna work on an actual transfer to get exactly to Wilkins' line, that was correctly drawn off. And once that line is transferred, that will trigger the first of twelve people payments for about five thousand bucks. Little less.
Any questions or any other discussion?
Yeah, but thank you to Gateway and then to our staff as well. I know Michelle and Ashley and Gavin were all working on that diligently as well.
I do have a question for Dennis regarding Alka San's requirements to take ownership of municipal-owned and maintained lines. I attended the Three Rivers Wet Weather Conference and they were discussing potentially revisiting some of the requirements. And so I wanted to see if Dennis or Michelle have any information about any of the requirement changes as far as the sizes of the lines and if there are other lines that we may be able to turn over to Alka San to take off of our books and list of required things to maintain.
Currently, the requirement is that it must be greater than eight inches to ten inches or greater, and it must be multi-municipal, so it must have at least two municipalities flow going through it. With Churchill being at the hill or at the top, fortunately, there's not much within a municipality that has flow from outside going into it. I believe you needed at least twenty-five customers coming in to you previously. In twenty eighteen, when this was first discussed, we did on behalf of the borough, right, and asked them to take over the pump station and the lines associated with it. Unfortunately, they did not change anything at that time. What they told us moving forward is that everything will wait until after this initial transfer and then they will start to look at expanding or looking further within the system. But one problem is, is that they most likely will look for multi-municipal because they're trying to get any of those trunk lines that would be considered a multi-municipal line. And that's what they're taking over at the moment.
Just want to make sure that we're, you know, looking towards the future and keeping our ears open to any changes that may come down the pipeline.
Yeah, they often talk about it, the monthly three weather meetings that I send on behalf of the borough and split the number of municipalities. Yeah, so we do try to pay attention to that or if there are any upcoming changes. I'll keep you posted if anything new occurs on that front.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to our next discussion item. Michelle DeJonah. Or who wanted to take? We got the three. Yeah. And then Danny can pop in there.
Right now, we have a sewer lateral ordinance that if you're selling a house, you're required to get televised from your house to the end of your property. I believe at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, we added one exemption. So if you're shown in the permitted on-lot system, that was the only exemption at the time. We do partner with Wilkins, who does review our C D T D for this, and they have several exemptions, so I thought it would be appropriate to have similar exemptions with them as well. And they're pretty common, I would say, or typical of sewer lateral exemptions. So we already have the one that real property, which is not carved by municipal San Perry Sewer, so that is on-lot system. A new home that has been constructed in accordance with applicable building codes and have not been formally occupied, so a new home that's just built. They say we're transferring real estate between spouses, event, and marriage, death, divorce, inter-familiar transfer of real estate, so families selling it to another individual in their family for like a dollar transfer. They would not be required to do that. The transfer of real estate into a trust in which the current owner is an exclusively named as beneficiary. I feel like we do see this somewhat a good bit trust being established with already current homeowners, the sovereign trust, so it's easier for their child to acquire the property if someone, something happens to them. Instances of refinancing or the assignment of mortgages, so if you are refinancing your home, you're still going to be living there and you not have to get C D T D sewer lateral. And real property being sold or transferred that has undergone inspection and testing in accordance with the article within two years of current sale date, unless there is reasonable cause for concern or suspicion or a problem as determined at the discretion of the borough. So if the property owner has had extensive work on their line and has been looked at by the county within the two years, that is mandatory if they go ahead and try to sell the property.
So if somebody bought a house, did work to it, and then sold it two years later?
Yes.
After you. Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, motion to approve the borough manager to advertise ordinance seven seven four, amending section fifty-four of chapter two forty-six of the code for exemptions from sanitary sewer lateral testing requirement. Second.
Any discussions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions to clarify. So on the memorandum that I received or that's included in the binder dated June ninth, it lists that this applies to all real property within the township. We're a borough, not a township, so I think that that needs to be changed. That's on page one. And then on page two, under enforcement and penalties, it says violations are subject to penalties of up to five hundred dollars per day per offense. And so is there anywhere where it's defined, what determines the fee of the violation?
Hopefully, there's any change proposed to the violations. The only thing that's being added here is the additional exemptions from the property sales that are not required to be projected for sewer lateral testing. So I'll just carry over the references to township of that memo, or just because I think Michelle was using the Wilkins ordinance, so obviously, we're not gonna include that language in the ordinance revision. It's just going to be that one section where currently carves out on-lot systems. We're going to instead carve out not only on-lot systems, but those other, if you look at the memo, there's other violated provisions. It's sort of, they're very short and sweet.
Yeah, Gavin, if I could just interject, I understand that we're just adding to the exemptions identified in the ordinance. I understand that. But my question was, on top of that, there is on page two, where it discusses violation and fees, and it states that the violations are subject to penalties of up to five hundred dollars per day per offense. And so my question was, is there somewhere that I can reference to know what determines what fee you are assessed based on the violation?
That's up to the magistrate. That's a maximum fee set by the ordinance, and it's up to the magistrate to set the amount of the fine. Do they consider those sliding fines? So the magistrate sets it anywhere from the lowest dollar amount up to five. We have several sections of the vehicle code where she gets to determine the penalty associated. Right?
All right, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. Moving on to number nine.
Madam President, I motion to award line striping contract to Alka Space Control LLC in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred eighty dollars in zero cents.
Second. Any discussion?
Yep. So there were several streets that were omitted in regards to line striping, depending on if you want to go through them individually.
That would be great. Thank you.
Lewin, Palmer, Derek, Forrest, Nonna, Cranberry, McCrady, Upper Ridgewood, or Parkin Lot, Marbury, Marge, James House Place. So is this, now that is the total package, is that with the ads as well, or the individual or with the ads?
So the total number would be the ten thousand three hundred and eighty.
Correct.
Dollar, yeah.
That's right. That was completely.
Yeah, the parking lot with its own separate line item as opposed to lineal footage of a line. Otherwise, it was a unit price contract based on the lineal footage or the length of the double yellow line, single yellow line, or stop bars were in each item associated with it. And that, those numbers that come in actually below the originally anticipated cost, so.
That's great.
I think that both, both numbers came in below that amount and were appropriate.
Great. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries. Moving on to number ten.
Madam President, motion to award paving rejuvenator contract to Pavement Technology Incorporated in the amount of forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Any discussion?
For twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three?
Yes, that's include all three. So the base bid amount, which was for the previous two years, or included twenty twenty-three, was for twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then alternate number one included the year previous, and alternate number two included the year previous to that. We did have a contractor, well, actually, this contractor, Pavement Technology Incorporated, who they do specialize in this, that's why we did only get the one bidder for this. We did have them evaluate these streets initially. The reason why we broke it down with the separate ad alternates was just to give some flexibility in case the numbers came in higher than expected. But at the end of the day, again, this cost came in slightly lower than originally anticipated. Again, it's just based on a square yardage of surface of roadway. And I'm not sure if we talked about rejuvenator specifically, but it is just an application. You are intended to apply within the first five years of road being paved. Road is first paved, a lot of oils, and within that kind of dry out, and that allows it to crack a little bit more easily, so it gives a little bit more length and life to your roadway, so it helps those newly paved roads go a little bit longer. And this is at a cost of a dollar and thirty cents per square yard, so it's a minimum cost for the application.
Any other discussion?
So we had budgeted a total for line striping rejuvenator and paving around one ninety. Everything did come in lower with the bids that we were anticipating, so it looked like we're doing one four to one hundred thousand. For all three.
So lower than what was budgeted, right? Always nice to hear. Any other discussion?
Michelle, can you repeat that number for the people who are connected by Zoom? Because you kind of went out when you were saying that.
So for all three, the striping rejuvenator and paving, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand, and we budgeted one hundred ninety. So the bids came in lower than we originally budgeted for.
Thank you.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, I have to follow up. I guess, so is that, is that out of liquid fuel? So is that money that we would have to use on future paving then, or is that restricted on like that budget amount overage?
I'm sorry.
So like we had budgeted almost two hundred, but we came more in more at one fifty, that fifty thousand, that liquid field where it has to be used on road paving and like certain things, that's restricted.
This year, the hundred and ninety, we did supplement a little from our general fund. So I think for our liquid fuels, we had about a hundred thousand, so we utilized a hundred thousand for liquid fuels. So I think for our liquid fuels, we had about a hundred thousand, so we utilized a hundred thousand for liquid fuels. And that's a hundred fifty thousand out of our general um, not ninety, so.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries, then we'll move on to our um other discussion items. Uh we'll start with our engineer timing.
Um uh we talked about a number of the items going on currently. Um just one uh additional item to note, so with the paving that got awarded at last month's meeting, we are looking at getting the reconstruction meeting scheduled with the contractor for that so we can uh outline a time for starting with that schedule.
Uh Keith?
Uh just to reiterate, uh Officer Luke Splitar, the Department of Work with him, I think it would be an excellent addition to our team and that should be in next week, so we'll make sure everybody gets.
Great.
Ashley, uh our next finance meeting, we've been over the budget calendar and the forms that we're sending out um for the point point of the budget, um Michelle and I will be meeting weekly and starting the budget process.
Awesome, thank you, Michelle.
I don't have anything, but Ralph is in here, I want to mention that last month they had seventy-seven fire call, which is a lot.
Yeah.
They also had a very extensive fire, it was a second alarm on Henley, uh which was a lot of manpower, a lot of work, the guys did really, really well. Um so yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor?
No report, Chris.
Move on to council members before we move on to Mayor.
I'll jump in here, I'll uh follow up with what Michelle said and just uh remind folks that, you know, spring's always a good time to double check your smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, gas leak detectors, uh fire extinguishers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh fire blankets are kind of the newer technology, if you've never heard of those. So if you have like a kitchen fire, it's a non-flammable, non-flammable blanket that you can pull out and throw over, uh you know, like your stove or something else, so they're pretty effective and fairly cheap now. Uh I learned about those. The fire was uh four doors up, it's a close neighbor of mine. Um it was devastating to the house, thank goodness, uh everyone, you know, she was okay. She did lose a pet, which is unfortunate, so we're keeping her in prayer. But with that said, I want to thank our police who responded, they did an excellent job. Uh the Woodland Hills EMS as well. And then for fire, I know there were additional companies, but I did see uh Churchill, Wilkins, Forest Hills, North for Sales, uh Holiday Park, uh at least, so we had, you know, multiple people respond. It was quickly dealt with, um you know, and just thank our volunteer firefighters for their dedication, you know, to the borough uh and to public safety, so. A couple other public safety things to mention. Um Michelle and I will be sitting down in a meeting with Frank from Woodland Hills EMS uh beginning of July just to discuss their operations a little bit more and, you know, look at future funding, kind of what, how, how we're supporting that right now and how our additional um, you know, neighboring municipalities that are part of Woodland Hills EMS are supporting them, uh just to make sure that that's, you know, gonna be an ongoing um, you know, ongoing thing and they can keep up service. Uh additionally, I attended Chris Malusio's town hall that was up in Oakmont, uh you know, about the power issues and, and other things that he would, you know, wanted to talk about, so that was a good thing to be at. Uh I went to the House panel that Representative Mandy Steele held uh as well with uh Abigail, Joe, Ryan D'Zaro. Um so, you know, again, that was good, there was a lot of good testimony from Duquesne Light. Um and the, you know, the state legislature is gonna be looking to hold them accountable for not just saying the right thing, but then following up on the actions. And we'll be coordinating, you know, with our state senators and representatives as well to uh, you know, affect what power we can to also hold them accountable and make sure that in future things, uh there's better communication, better purpose restoration, and uh, you know, they did talk about two billion dollars of investment that they'll be making over the next few years, so. I am looking forward to learning more about that and being able to share that. And then, last thing I had, oh, I also attended the Allegheny County Regional Fire Meeting. So the Allegheny County Council, a number of members from the Allegheny County Council have started discussions uh about regionalization, regionalization of fire and support, uh understanding that, you know, there certainly seems to be a need during the day uh and the possibility of having some paid staff and what that would look like if the county could help with that, so it's early discussions. There was a lot of good discussion at the meeting and I'll share more as we hear more.
Thank you.
Um, I'm not done. Just call me Paul, uh no, last thing is, uh I don't have nonsense again, but July eighth, uh ten AM to noon, I'll be holding office hours here, uh chamber.
Nice.
Chamber.
Solo?
If anyone wants to join me, they're more than welcome, that just happened to be a day and time I could pick.
What is it, July?
July eighth, ten AM to noon.
I'll try to join you.
Now.
Thank you. And we, but I know you have. I have a few things. Um first of all, I will be doing a session as well with Andrea on June twentieth from noon to two, so please stop by. You know, we kind of, we try to mix it up, so sometimes somebody can do evening, we, we're gonna do in the afternoon, so that's from noon to two. Uh just a reminder, tomorrow is our last yard pickup. So if you have leaves, clippings, trees, large branches, get them bundled up, but tomorrow's the last day. So that's just a reminder there. Um you know, our composting workshop is so successful that Michelle and Ashley and I talked about, uh we're gonna meet with the EA Resource Council to talk about other things we can do similar to that that could help our residents, so that's, that's upcoming, so maybe we can get another workshop together soon. Um reminder, our newsletter is coming out uh middle of July. And um if you're interested, it's too late now, but for the next newsletter, if you're interested, you want to advertise your business or whatever, please contact us because we're now starting to do things like that, so we're looking for advertisers for that. Um we brought up the Yegel Room in the past, that we also run out the Yegel Room, so if you have a birthday party, just that, whatever you want to do, that's available, nonprofits get fifty percent off the regular price, so it is so expensive anyhow. Um a reminder, this communications again, uh Community Day, Saturday, August ninth, that's, that'll be here before you know it. Uh we're still looking for some volunteers, you can call our office, you can go on our website, contact any of us, and uh we're still looking for that. If you're an artist or a vendor and you're interested, also contact us, we're still, you know, putting that together. I want to thank all the residents that showed up for the Churchill Dinner at Denuncio a few weeks ago. Um it was really terrific, we had a great crowd, food was great, everything was just, just fantastic. That was just nice to get all the neighbors together. And then one last thing that has been bothering me, and I was talking to Michelle and Ashley about this. That storm that hit was one thing, and it was unprecedented, and hopefully everybody's learning by it. But since that has happened, my power's gone out, I think a few times since then. Andrea's has gone out for a long time, days ago, and I'm really losing my patience. And I'm sure there are a lot of people out there, I know I talked to Celeste, a woman who lives on Georgetown, and Georgetown gets it probably even worse more than us. And it's almost like a weekly thing, sometimes it's ten minutes, sometimes it's a half hour, sometimes it's, I don't know, you had it like, what, eight hours?
Yeah, it was last week, now I know.
You know, we're getting to the point that every time there's a storm, we're all sitting there going, oh geez, are we gonna lose power again?
Or something you say?
Right, right, there's nothing going on. And I'm asking everybody out there to start to keep a log, it's Michelle's idea and it's a good one. Keep a log and then you need to, I mean, we're gonna do our best, in fact, we're, we're hoping to meet soon with Duquesne Light about what they're improving, and maybe they don't realize how bad we are here. Maybe that, maybe we're worse than a lot more places, I don't know. I know their equipment's old and we have a ton of trees, but we, we are planning to do that because I can understand why people are getting fed up, I have a lot of patients, but I'm getting fed up too. But here's another thing, even if it's ten minutes, then you gotta reset your clock, you're, you know, it's just kind of a pain. And sometimes like Andrea says, it, it happens for no reason. I mean, I'm sure there's a reason, but it's, it's a sunny day and, you know, whatever, so.
People work from home, no.
People work from home, it's right, and then that's, that's really tough. Um but I've been keeping a log, I want other people to keep a log and then go on their website because you're gonna complain about it, it's also good to show them proof as to what's happening and Michelle's idea. I think it's a good thing, um because we can't do so much, but I think if everybody, they hear more and more and more, especially coming from Churchill, maybe it will work harder on our behalf.
So that is all, thank you for sharing that.
And to Duquesne Light and the PUC.
And the PUC, yes.
So just for clarification, you know, the PUC is the Public Utility Commission. So that's a separate, you know, government entity that, that takes those complaints and, again, you know, get them on record. You know, don't be a freak, send it there, um you know, and, and regularly.
Yeah, yes. The more voices that are heard, the more we could hopefully help ourselves.
Anybody else on council?
Yeah, I just had more of a, more of an observation than anything. Um I've noticed post-power outage Armageddon. Um social media is getting very snippy. Um you know, it's, yes, we all have social media accounts, yes, we all use them for post-borough stuff, you know, events and stuff, but like that's our private lives and we bend over backwards to really give people a venue to express their angst, you know, we have these office hours, I know Michelle and Ashley are always available. You know, and it's just, it's starting to seem like, you know, it's going pit for tat. And it's not a good look on anyone's part, and I just think, you know, we have these office hours. I've had several, we get one or two people that show up. You know, if you want to talk and have an actual productive dialogue, show up to these things, cause like we go on Facebook for two minutes, we log off. You know, it might take three or four days before we answer a concern, but you know, in these workshop, or these uh office hours, you know, we could sit and talk to you one-on-one, it's just a way more conducive way to get things done. And we do it for you guys, we don't do it because we just want to come and sit here for two hours. You know, we really want to hear from residents, so I would strongly urge people to really take advantage of these office hours, if there's something you want to gripe about, by all means come. We always joke like it turns into a ask council anything, you know, you want to come and ask about uh what plants split in your yard, we'll take a shot at it, but yeah, definitely try to utilize those offices.
What I think to the point also, if there is a complaint, you're not able to come to the office hours because you worked during the day. I know that some council members have evenings, we also have our borough emails that we check regularly, so. And if there are any concerns, please send us an email. I know that um our emails are all available on our website, it's every single council member's email. Um if you want to just email the manager, uh Michelle's really good at forwarding us emails as well. If it's a specific committee, it goes directly to that committee chair, so please use um those avenues as they are more appropriate and you will get a response quicker than social media. Um any other on council here?
Yes.
Go ahead, Brooke.
Go ahead, Matt, I'll wait for you to conclude, go ahead.
I just had a quick additional thought, um the Borough Public Works guys, you know, with all the rain we've been having, they're out and keeping the storm drains, you know, open and clean, but if you happen to notice one, make sure you call and report it in. Or if it's, you know, near your driveway and you can take your rake and, and clean it out real quick or just get the stuff off the path. That just helps make sure during these heavy rain events, we don't have any localized flash flooding or anything like that.
So my comments are regarding the school district. Um the Woodland Hills School Board has voted to set and advertise the proposed tax levy, excuse me, tax levy for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um they are proposing a one point three three millage increase. Um and there is an opportunity for residents within the district to provide comment um regarding this tax increase. So if you would like to attend the agenda setting meeting that's gonna be happening June eleventh at seven PM, you can attend in person at the administrative building at five three one Jones Avenue in Bradock, PA, or you can attend virtually. You do need to register to speak and you can do that by going to the Woodland Hills School District's website. It's under the board tab, um you can register there to speak. If you can't make the June eleventh meeting, you can attend the June eighteenth meeting. Um that meeting will be held again at the administrative building at seven PM. You will need to register to speak um to discuss, you know, any issues or if you're in support of increasing the um tax millage. If you want more information about why they're proposing the tax levy, you can watch the legislative meeting that was held on May twenty-first. Um I would suggest that you go to their YouTube and pull it up, there is some interesting information there. Um they use the average assessed property value to determine what the cost would be per household. Um it seems like a lot of government bodies use that average assessed value, um even though that does not paint the full picture of, you know, what each household would be taking on um for a increase in their tax burden, but I suggest that you watch it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor?
Thank you, uh I had a couple things here, um last week I attended a uh Tree Canopy Co-Work meeting with uh down on, on Brother Street and Ken, Ken Balki and Luke Anwer. And several things were brought out about um the, what we're doing with our tree inventory, GSI mapping, uh consultant at Arboris and developing funds for maintaining trees and ordinance developments. Um but what came out, I, it's break time, we got to talk to other people in attendance there. And I talked to this woman who is with the uh, it's called the uh, whatever it is out here, the Student Conservation Foundation. They provide young people to come into a municipality borough and do work on projects around the borough. So we have Bullock's Pen Park that I keep talking about, working on that. So maybe, and I'm gonna meet with this Joanna Lemon, appropriately named Angela Lemon, um sometime next week to talk about some possible projects. There was another gentleman there too that we talked to, they also provide students to work within the community. So I think those are some possibilities we could look into, utilizing some of those people. Um the other thing I wanted to say was, I, I posted it today on our web, with our, our Facebook page, it went into effect June fifth, the texting and the driving law, it's called Paul Miller's Law. If you're not familiar with it, you know, young gentleman was killed, um someone was reaching for his cell phone and kind of over the neck and, and took his short life. Um so that's out there, it's still, I know the chief's gonna tell you, that's gotta be hard to do with these, and what's the fine for that?
Well, the Paul Miller's Law took the texting and driving and enhanced it to the point where you cannot use any handheld device while you're operating a vehicle, and that includes while you're stopping or anything. You cannot have, you have to use Bluetooth to talk to text, uh but there can be no device in your hand at any point while you're operating Bluetooth.
Could it be on your seat? Someone asked me, could the phone be on your seat?
No, you can't have the device active, I mean, on your, whether it's in your hand or I'm thinking on your seat would be worse. Some people try to do this.
I think it's something, it's something that's terrible like this.
Yeah, you have to use Bluetooth and you can't actually have it in your hand or be actively using the device.
So I know we've all gotten to a customer like Kavla's dog, we hear that phone ring and we gotta answer it right away. So we gotta try to stay away from our devices. Uh the other thing I wanted to say was congratulations to all the Woodland Hills graduates. We attended the ceremony last week and just in time, um we walked out a little bit early and the skies let loose. But before that, everything went off really well, I mean, the kids, I had a little over three hundred kids and a lot of statistics about the amount of kids who are going on to four-year colleges, two-year colleges, whether they're going to technical schools, some are going to the armed forces. So it's pretty impressive what these kids are doing in our district. And the other thing too, is I know just we were leaving at the top of the hill, we saw the chief standing at the top there. It was raining like Noah's Ark was gonna be coming up next, but he was out there with the rest of our, we have what, five officers on there and like, you know, directing that traffic during that storm, I know everybody had to be leaving at the same time.
Yeah, usually we get like everybody coming in and then you have about an hour and a half lull during the ceremony and then everybody comes out, so it makes it kind of convenient to get everybody in and open all the lanes and come out. Well, as people finished coming in, people were starting to come out, so it was a never-ending flow of traffic and as the skies got darker, people kept leaving, so yeah, but I'm still trying to.
That was a rough play, we just got out of the guitar, uh and that's all I have for tonight, thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Um that is it.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Good night all.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.